Present with the exception of Jeff President. All right, was this meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was. As a reminder, it's being livestreamed and recorded.
All right, welcome to visitors. Is there any public comment? Moving on, comments by board members and superintendent. We have the twenty-three, twenty-four audit overview.
So last Wednesday and Thursday, we had the auditors in district. And everything went pretty smoothly. I mean, there's always a couple little things, of course, that they find that's what they're here for. But probably, we had one journal entry that was very small, like six hundred dollars that would need to be changed. And then, we had a reporting requirement for a grant that was not quite right. So we'll probably see a finding on that one. But otherwise, everything went very smoothly. And just kudos to the district office staff because they work hard all year long to make this happen. And that's really our, like, Olympics. To, you know, get everything ready for them in such a short amount of time because we have stuff coming in even after June thirtieth that we still have to get in the books for the prior year. So it really is a crunch and they just do an amazing job. So thanks to all of them. Any questions specifically or?
No.
Thank you.
Can you just say, Kelly, are there any extra agendas from audience members? Yeah. Would, how many, would I get a agenda? See, I've got mine up. Yeah, I can keep it up here too, but. All right, thank you.
All right. Let's move on to the superintendent annual timeline review.
That's a new address.
It's me, yeah, all right. Well, I thought you were gonna say, so we submitted, or everybody worked on their comments and their, kind of the, what their, their assessment of Tim. He, well, first of all, he completed it. He gave his comments, he reviewed, gave his thoughtful reflection of everything that has went on in the past year, submitted it to us, and then we filled out the form and made comments. And then we will work together on that review tonight. And by August, I don't know, twenty, like, the end of August, you and I will get together and we'll have a conversation about it, so. That's, then we're done.
Propulsive.
Yeah, propulsive. Okay. Any questions or? Financial reports, move on, and that's Dave.
All right, as of six thirty twenty-two, balance of the Citizens Bank checking, one million eighty-eight thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-two cents. Money market, twelve thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars fifty-four cents. Fund forty-six is fifty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. Suicide prevention is five thousand one hundred thirty dollars and sixty-four cents. ADM debt service, one hundred sixty-eight thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. ADM referendum is two million nine hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. The other referendum account is three million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, six hundred thirteen dollars and nine cents. Another debt service account, one hundred fifty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and nineteen cents. For total, eight million one hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Thank you. The motion?
Motion to accept the report. Right.
Derek made the motion, Lance second. Is there any other discussion? Derek, time. All in favor?
Aye.
The vote? All right. They're approved. Next is the consideration of the consent agenda. And there is one, part-time and two full-time curricular modification requests to enroll in virtual classes for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Does that have to be separate? We do.
No, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, I use.
No, it's all part of consent agenda.
Yeah. So I just data motions.
So move. Second.
So Lance made the motion, Dave second. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Right, motion carries. We'll move on to the administrative reports. Or nothing? Okay. Key work of our school board. We've got student, staff, and community recognition, and Derek is gonna do that for us tonight.
Yep, so we've got a trap team that apparently is amazing. Three out of four years, so congrats to the trap team and the coaches on another state title. Three state titles in four years is an impressive feat. And our next recipient is Justin Kam. Justin, congrats on your runner-up finish at state trap meet.
Moving on to consideration of approval of annual notices.
So annual notices are done every year in July, and so WSB basically puts out a packet telling us what notices we need and then what the requirements for each notice are. Not much really changes from year to year, so this year there was just a couple of changes. One was the meningococcal disease one. We're able to get rid of that, so we will be eliminating that one. And then, there was one that had to be added, so it's last rank under the University of Wisconsin Guaranteed Enmation Program. Which is basically, every year, the eleventh graders in the top ten percent need to be notified that they're in the top ten percent, so. Not really too big of one, but.
And these will be published or?
Yes, most of them are in the newsletter, all of them are on the website. And then there's some that get published in the newspaper, so.
Okay. So we need a motion?
Yeah.
So move. Second.
So Dave made the motion, Lance second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All right, motion carries. Consideration of approval of notice of identifying pupil academic standards in mathematics, science, reading, and writing, geography, and history for SEC School District for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So this has to be done separately. We have two different ones, because we have to do a separate one for the brick and mortar schools and then one for the virtual school. So we just have to identify what academic standards we're using, and this, the exhibit link goes to the notice which has the link that we just used, the Wisconsin Academic Standards. Nothing has changed, that's what we've always done, so we just have to approve each of them separately.
Okay.
They're all posted on our website as well.
Are there other standards that can be used by district?
Um, not if we wanna be in compliance with DPI. Yeah. In every curricular area is reviewed with the committee statewide, every ten years, ten-year cycle. Good.
Make a motion to approve C.
Second.
All right, Dave made the motion, Derek second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Motion to approve D.
Second.
Derek made the motion, Dave second. Any more discussion? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Right, motion carries. Moving on to core agenda items. First up is consideration of approval of updated student fees for twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So as you know, we already approved these back in May at the reorganizational meeting. However, since then, there were some changes to some of the dual-credit class fees. It sounds like it's a timing issue where the universities are not really notifying us until late May to early June. So I know when we set the fees, Mr. Redman had said for the cap classes, if there was any changes, to go ahead and make those updates, you know, that it was pre-approved. So I'm thinking in the future, we may wanna do that for all of the dual-credit class fees because it does seem like they come in later than what the other ones, you know, the ones that we're setting ourselves. So some of the changes are the ones that are lists, that are highlighted in yellow. So the education three oh three at UW Stout, that is a new class. Music one oh five and one oh six through UW River Falls was originally approved as three hundred and fifteen dollars, and you can see that that has gone up to three hundred and thirty dollars. Math two twenty-five at UW River Falls also was an additional class. That one's a little more expensive because that's a four-credit class instead of a three-credit class. And then the two at the bottom through the University of Minnesota. I'm not sure exactly what was going on there, but we had some textbook fees. You can see that the history thirteen oh seven now has a ninety-dollar online textbook fee, and history thirteen oh eight does not have a textbook fee. So those are the changes for approval for tonight. Everything else on the document is the same as it was in May.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the changes. Second.
Uh, Dave made the motion, Brad second. Is there any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Close. Right, motion carries. Moving on to the consideration of approval of revision of the twenty-four, twenty-five staff and student calendar.
So as you recall, January every year, the board approves this, which you did, and it came to our attention late this spring, potential conflict with the graduation change, so we've since I can remember, we've had graduation on Friday Memorial Day weekend. We changed that, proposed change for next year to get that away from that weekend. Seemed to be more cons associated with pros at that weekend. And moving it back to the twenty-ninth, or the thirtieth originally. We thought it'd be okay, we talked to the good Rob, Roberts, good neighbor days folks, and knew that, you know, okay, graduation is gonna be from seven to eight-thirty on Friday night. And that was a change, and we didn't want to negatively impact that, but they understood, and, you know, it's done by eight-thirty, and it wasn't necessarily prohibitive to any, one, the good Roberts, good neighbor days, or, you know, graduating seniors and their families. So that wasn't the conflict. What we found out was track sectionals, or that Friday. And we didn't want to put any students, and our coaches, but especially graduating seniors, in a position to have to choose between sectional track and attending their graduation ceremony. So with our proposal, moving it up one day to Thursday. We do recognize there could be baseball or softball postseason that night. But the difference between baseball or softball and girls soccer, that wasn't girls soccer, it was baseball or softball. And track, is that track has about thirteen teams that would be involved, so moving it's pretty unlikely. Whereas baseball or softball, it'd be, we've done this before, we did it two years in a row maybe now with Eltuna. You know, we could, if we, if there was a conflict, we would move the time up to one o'clock or two o'clock in the afternoon, or move it up a day perhaps, so. We are recommending, because of sectional track conflicts, changing to Thursday, May twenty-ninth for graduation. We thought about it, you know, what kind of issues we could run into if folks had, had reserved the Hammond-Town Hall already for the thirtieth or whatever, or thirty-first. We figured, well, a graduation day earlier shouldn't be a problem with their grad party, so. We couldn't think of any reason that this wouldn't work a lot better than the thirtieth. So we're proposing two changes, moving graduation to Thursday, May twenty-ninth. And secondly, we, as far as we're redoing it, we looked at our professional development calendar, and we moved it from November fifteenth, Professional Development Day for teachers, to November first. We, we tried to accomplish one per month, it still accomplishes that, it still gets it, moves it a little farther away from our Thanksgiving break. And a bonus this next year is it's the day after Halloween, so. We understand it's tough for especially trick-or-treaters, that might be all later parents. And to have that day off for families might be more beneficial than November fifteenth. So those are the two changes we're asking for you to consider and potentially approve. On November first PD Day and Thursday, May twenty-ninth, graduation day.
Motion to approve, second.
Derek made the motion, Dave second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Right, motion carries. We'll move on.
So would graduation a week earlier than normal, would that just take much time away from?
Yeah, we looked at that and it was, yeah. Yeah.
It was three weeks, that they would be out of the classroom right? Okay, moving on to consideration of approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget revision.
So we have one budget revision for last year. DPI brought this to my attention, and we actually had our expenditure coded correctly, but in the budget amount, when you have, when we have our, like, debt proceeds that we receive, and then through Baird, there's always a refinancing of that. It usually creates a rounding amount. And that amount is what they term as restricted for refinancing. So then in the next year, we have to, next fiscal year, we have to clear that amount out of our books. I had it originally budgeted for N function two hundred and eighty-one thousand within fund forty-nine. And it should have been budgeted in function two hundred and eighty-two thousand in fund forty-nine. This all rolls up into two hundred and eighty thousand function. But because of the difference between it being restricted and not being restricted, it was considered a budget change. So this was the one change that we had from our original October levy budget.
So it didn't change the dollar amount at all?
No.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, Derek made the motion. And Dave second, is there any more discussion?
All right, just to clarify, the difference is one is restricted, one isn't restricted.
Right.
Functionally, there's no?
There really is no difference. It's, it's part of the aid calculation, so when, when you have this rounding amount and then you clear, clear it out of your books the next year, you don't receive aid on that one hundred and twenty-four thousand. So that's really all it is.
Got it.
To make sure that that is coded properly so that we don't receive aid on it. And like I said, the actual expenditure I had coded properly, so that was fine. It was just the budget amount, and DPI asked if we could change that.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
The propose, right, motion carries. Next up is the review of the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget and levies to be presented at the annual meeting.
All right, so Kelly, put your packet together, so this is the same packet that we will have for next Monday's annual meeting. And we'll kind of just go through it, and then we'll come back and talk about the, the budget information a little bit more. So it's pretty standard. This year, we are meeting on the twenty-second of July. And it will be at the middle school library. So we'll meet at seven o'clock. We will have the budget hearing, that's usually about a half an hour. And then we'll go right into the annual meeting once the budget hearing is done. So you can see that first page. The second page then is the table of contents that shows all the different items that are within the packet. The following page is the agenda, so this is what we will follow. We will, again, we'll start with the budget hearing at seven PM. We'll go through the budget. Once that's closed, then we will immediately start the annual meeting. It has some basic information on there as far as what we're proposing for tax levy and mill rate, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. As well as to make temporary loans up to nine hundred thousand, and that has been at that amount for four or five years now. I didn't look back, but. The next page is all the resolutions, so once we're in the annual meeting, then we will go through the resolutions and approve those, and of course, this is a community meeting. So the community is able to make a resolution and, you know, be a part of that process and, and vote during that process. The, the next page labeled four, two pages labeled four and five are the meeting minutes from last year's annual meeting in July. We always include the treasures report as of June thirtieth. So that's page six. And then we have our letter from the auditors on page seven that says that they have come. They've gone through our books, and everything seems to be in order. Pages eight through thirteen, we will go through in just a minute. As we move on to fourteen, that's our community education summary. So we put this together every year for the community, so they know what programs are offered through our community ed program. We did add to the Central Kids Care Program that we will be, you know, looking at leasing the property on two oh seven Packer Drive in Roberts. Just so they are aware, we don't have much information as of right now, but just to get that word out. Page sixteen is our revenue limit exemption savings update. So each year, because we levy in fund thirty-eight, we are required to report what our energy savings are from those improvements that we made back in two thousand twelve. So until those bonds are fully paid off, we'll continue to do that. Page seventeen is our CSAT eleven mill rate summary for twenty-three, twenty-four. So you can see all the different districts and what they're levying for, the amounts, and what their mill rate is for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Pages eighteen through twenty-one, I believe, yep. Are, are the debt schedule summaries that Baird provides us with that shows the outstanding debt of the district. So you can look at those. And then we have our equalized value summary on page twenty-two. And finally, we have a copy of our calendar, and I believe that was the one that was updated tonight. So this is the, the most accurate. So we go back to page eight. We'll start in on the financial information. So as of June thirtieth, our fund balance remains stable at right around that seventeen percent. We added about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to our fund balance to keep that at seventeen percent, which was a bit more than normal, and it's mostly because of the the CTE addition for the advanced manufacturing portion of that addition. Because it's being paid for through the Restore Grant, that is being put through into fund ten. So that's part of our general operating fund. So we're coding those expenditures to fund ten, we're receiving the money from CBTC into fund ten. So that added about one point five million dollars to our expenditures for twenty-three, twenty-four that we wouldn't have had otherwise. So that was quite a bit, and you'll notice that as we go through two that it, it's causing kind of a hump in our revenues and our expenditures that we're gonna expect to, to decrease for next year. But overall, we're still in compliance then with our GASB fifty-four policy, which says our fund balance needs to be between seventeen and nineteen percent. Going into the fund ten revenues. Our levy and trailer tax in source two-ten, you can see, was increased quite a bit for twenty-three, twenty-four. Part of that was because we received about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for TID district payout from the Village of Hammond. So that was a one-time thing. And then our levy for this coming year, of course, will not include that because those were one-time dollars. And we're basing that on flat enrollment and a stable summer school FTE as well at forty. So of course, we'll adjust them after we do our student count on the third Friday in September and make sure that we have all those amounts accurate, so when we set the levy in October, we can adjust that. It works in relationship with the general aid estimate. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, we received just shy of thirteen million in state aid. And our estimate for twenty-four, twenty-five is about fourteen point five, just shy of fourteen point five million. So it is going up quite a bit, as, you know, as an estimate, preliminary estimate. And that's partially because we paid out quite a bit in debt service. We had levied two, two different years and additional payment for debt service, but that all got paid out in twenty-three, twenty-four. So that's gonna kind of help us a little bit next year for that general aid. Source two-ten also includes a small amount from the villages for mobile home tax. It's about thirty-five thousand a year. So I'm just gonna point out some of them that are, like, different, so if you have any questions about any of the other ones, of course, ask away. Source two-sixty for your non-capital sales, you can see in twenty-two, twenty-three, we only brought in about forty thousand. And then in twenty-three, twenty-four is more like seventy-five, and that's what we're planning on for next year. That was because that was that one year that Oshkosh decided they were gonna collect the cap, cap, cap class fees, and we did not, and then the next year, they went right back to us having to collect those for them. So we collect those, then we pay them back out to UW Oshkosh. Two eighty, source two eighty is interest on investments. So you can see over, you know, even compared to twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, we've earned quite a bit more in interest on our accounts. And that's mostly through Citizens Bank over in Roberts. If you go back even further, you would see that we, in the past, would never earn more than about five thousand or maybe seventy-five hundred dollars. So they have definitely, you know, increased our interest rate, and we try to take advantage of that by keeping as much as we can in that money market account that earns a little bit higher interest rate even than the checking. We are thinking that that's probably gonna decrease a little bit for next year just with the outlook of what's going on with the economy and the talk of the Federal Reserve possibly decreasing that prime lending rate. That will affect the amount of money that we will receive on the money that we're holding to, so. So we're anticipating closer to maybe a hundred and ninety thousand next year instead of the two fifty. Of course, series, or source three forty, that is our open enrollment revenue that we receive from other districts. Most of that is for our virtual charter school. So you can see how that amount is growing and how we anticipate that to continue to grow into next year. Source five-ten. This is the one where the Restore Grants Source five-ten, this is the one where the restore grants for the advanced manufacturing um addition over at the high school is being coded. So you can see, we did have some restore funds in twenty-two, twenty-three, but then we had quite a bit more, one point eight million almost. Most of that is for the restore grant, not all of it. There was a little bit for the nursing grant, I think it was like five thousand dollars. So most of it is those restore grant funds. There still is restore grant money left. I did not include a budget for that as of right now because we're finalizing this year and then we'll know how much we have left for next year. So when we set the levy in October, we'll make those changes. So source six-twenty, that's what I was talking about earlier with the equalization aid. So you can see, we went from about thirteen point five million in twenty-two, twenty-three down to about thirteen million.[659.58]
Twenty-four, twenty-five, of course, going back down again, that's where the majority of those restore grant funds were coded for the building projects. Any other specific questions on any of the Fund Ten expenditures? All right, we will continue on then with the special funds. So Fund Twenty-one and Twenty-seven are combined, so Fund Twenty-one is our student activity accounts and Fund Twenty-seven is our special ed accounts. So those are combined on on this sheet um for the purpose so that ending fund balance that you see there is actually all of the account balances for Fund Twenty-one, special ed zeros out at the end of the year. Fund Thirty-eight is our non-referendum debt, so that's those energy efficiency projects I was talking about earlier, so all the debt service payments for those run through Fund Thirty-eight. And then Fund Thirty-nine, of course, is our um regular referendum approved debt. So for Fund Thirty-nine, we did levy an additional um well, for Twenty-three, Twenty-four, and we will again in Twenty-four, Twenty-five to keep our mill rate steady at nine dollars and twenty cents. Um that additional amount is about three million dollars. So we'll be able to prepay some more of that debt that we took on that was at those higher interest rates, some of that is like four and a half to five and a half percent. And I know when we made that prepayment this year, we saved over a million dollars just in interest costs, so. So that will be good to to be able to do that again. Um Fund Forty, that's our Fund Forty-six, that has the fifty-seven dollars in it. And then it's also all of our referendum projects that are being run through there, except for the advanced manufacturing portion. So you can see at the end of Twenty-three, Twenty-four, we still had about four point four million there left in that fund to spend on construction projects and they are anticipating completion, of course, right around the time school starts, so. Our food service fund, you'll notice again that the fund balance there is decreasing. Um this goes back a few years ago, but during COVID, when the federal government was paying districts for all meals, not just for free and reduced students, they had increased the reimbursement rate quite significantly because the cost of food overall was going up very rapidly. And our district already had contracts in place with Chartwells to mitigate a lot of those higher food costs. So we didn't have the same impact and it put money into our food service fund balance. We're only able to keep three months' worth of operating expenses in that account. So over the last two years, we've been spending that down so that we're in compliance with that. So we are good now with our Fund Fifty fund balance, so moving forward, you'll see that that um fund balance either increased slightly or remain pretty stable. Uh, community ed, I don't think there was anything too significant there, except for our numbers for Twenty-four, Twenty-five do not include the additional daycare um plans, we just didn't have time to get those numbers together, so when we set the levy in October, we will make those changes. You can see at the bottom or toward the middle of the page there, the proposed property tax levy and the amounts that we will levy into the general fund for non-referendum debt for those energy efficiency projects, for referendum debt, and then for the community ed service. So a total levy of about twelve point two million and with an eight percent increase in property values estimated for this coming year. That keeps our mill rate rate at about that nine dollars and twenty cents per thousand of value. Pages twelve and thirteen are basically the same information, it's just in a more condensed version. So everything in there is the same as what we went through. I guess the only thing additional you can see on there is the difference in the total levy from year to year right at the bottom of that second page. Any questions? So this is what we plan to present then on Monday night at the annual meeting.
Yeah, I I guess maybe one question, how how does what's proposed in this change if you were to make a change like a like the the lease mid-year? Like where you would then potentially see revenue in and additional expenditures out? Like is there any unique process with that?
Well, that's kind of where some of the budget revisions will come in at the end of the year if we do decide to do something like that. But each month as we go along and you guys meet and approve the bills and approve a new lease, it's automatically approved as part of the budget.
Sure.
So it's not, like a separate approval is not required.
Okay, so there may be a reconciliation, kind of like you had we had earlier in the meeting, that re-categorizes something, but it doesn't change functionally what you're doing at all throughout the year.
Correct.
Yeah.
At this annual meeting, it's approved by, you know, lecturers, as a preliminary budget.
Yes.
It's a walking timeline situation, school finance approved this, but then we don't even know how many students we have.
Yeah.
So for Friday in September and then, so the final actual budget submit DPI is end of October.
Yeah.
So we should know that.
And it will look different than this.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
Because things change along the way, like our general aid amount will be different most likely than what our estimate is and our student count might be different than what are what we're estimating, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
So um next we can move on to the consideration of approval of the second readings. We have second readings E through N.
Motion to approve E through N.
Second.
Derek made the motion, my answer second. There any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Right, motion carries.
All right, yeah, for first readings, um just as a reminder, you know, first readings are first readings and how we do our our process, but I understand there's, you know, there's there's a lot of information I want to present tonight on on Policy One Thirteen. Anticipate questions and discussion and kind of, but first of all, I just want to catch up the speed because this has been a lot of recent developments in the past three days essentially. So backing up, I got to back up two steps in order to catch us up to speed. So first of all, in your handouts, I gave you an example of a Policy One Thirteen from WASB's Policy Resource Guide. Once again, WASB Policy Resource Guide, Wisconsin Association School Board has um a program that we can subscribe to and pay for annually um to get a bunch of sample policies that have been developed and vetted by their legal counsel. So it saves us a lot of work. Um now, they don't have all of them, so for those policies that they don't have as sample policies, we go out, Kelly and I, and find samples from other school districts, kind of make them our own, um and and then uh vet them with legal counsel at WASB and then present it to you to consider for first reading and second reading. Policy Resource Guide's been awesome, we're we're in the eight hundreds now, we started in the one hundreds, I think, three years ago. Um we're nearing the end, um I'm thinking about three or four months, we'll now have been through every policy, been vetted legally, been updated, um and we're good. So with that said, um I need to tell you that the first reading can't be considered tonight because there was a a mix-up. So here's what happened, we just discovered it today, uh when we set up our, right before we set up our meeting with with Barry, our legal counsel. Um uh every Tuesday, Kelly and I meet and cover policy at two o'clock. Right, it's it's has a different timeline, start it, revise it, and then we get get input from principals, Jen or whatever the policy is, and come up with the final one to present to you guys for consideration. So we did this one, so you know, I started hearing about uh Title Nine and these policies in August first implementation. I think it was the last superintendent meeting in May. And um like, oh, August first, I can have some new language, okay, and then it just really um very little communication about that, but then it started to really um be talked about and title, like up here, Title Nine, Title Nine, I looked, no, yeah, okay, we'll adopt it. So as part of this, that's why you can see there's a One Thirteen put in here because of that. So Kelly and I went to the Policy Resource Guide, we pulled up their policy and submitted it and um you can see, just insert school name or insert title, right, that's all we really need to change things, we don't change the um essential wording and legality of it. Um and that's where it sat, even in my communication when I uh with the board uh this 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 last week. So then, I think, so, oh, I know, I asked Michaela, well, Michaela had just went to an HR conference and all this, got a bunch of information. I just got some recent information um from WASB literally this morning. And I said, Michaela, can you do me a favor while I go to the construction meeting and compare our old policy to the new one? I come back and she says, it's really about the same, and she's like, there's not even a transgender or gender identity or pregnancy in here, I'm like, wait a minute, that's the gist of it. So then I asked Kelly, I said, can you pull up the Policy Resource Guide again? And she's, soon as she pulls up, oh, it says updated July twenty-twenty-four, she said, this wasn't here before. So then I'll start to make it, because I was thinking, what's the big deal, I'm not seeing a lot of, you know, changes. Well, I do know what the big deal is, we'll get to that. Um but then, so when we called Barry, cause like, oh, I bet she was recent, so when we talked to Barry Forbes at WSB, because their recent guidance said talk to your legal counsel. So we set up a one-fifteen phone call with Erica and I and and Kelly and Michaela. So that had to do with HR, had to do with obviously board agenda, and had to do with policy. So in that, I explained that, and I go, we, did you just put it on there? He goes, yeah, we put that on there late in the afternoon on July third. Ah, that that makes sense, I go, we met, I believe it was July second, let me calendar, July second, so first of all, this isn't a first, gonna be a first reading, it can't be, it's not the updated one, so that's my fault, my apologies, um kind of check that off the list, it's not a first reading. All right, so then now back to uh the the new laws and actually rule, because it's it's an executive uh branch thing, the way, you know, again, was taught and when I learned about this. So this isn't called Title Nine, it's nondiscrimination in district programs, activities, and operations, of which Title Nine is included in that. And the gist of, um and I asked Barry, you know, again, there's um seven hundred pages? No, fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred pages, you know, within it, and then let's look at the executive summaries and all that. I mean, let's let's get down to condensing it into something. And um the uh the gist of it is um is that it uh discrimination on the basis of sex includes discrimination on the basis of sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy or related conditions, sexual orientation, and gender identity. So that's the biggest thing, all this is about nondiscrimination and prohibition prohibition of harassment, right, which I think we all can believe in. What's different is those different protected classes now are being added in there. So um you know, I I knew what we've been hearing, but I said, Barry, what what have you been hearing, what's the biggest pushback for this? He says, I essentially hear it's it's regarding athletics and the concern that, you know, biological males could participate in girls' athletics. And I said, is that anywhere in here? He says, no, as a matter of fact, athletics are not included in this at all. Um you can see in that one document I sent you, you know, they they got lots of, I think, hundred and thirty thousand pieces of feedback immediately or so about that, so that's currently not as part of this, it's being considered, and there'll be future guidance on that later. Um I said, he does recommend, so in that one, uh what does this mean for school districts from the WASB legal counsel today? So Bob Butler is another attorney with Barry Forbes. Um what does this mean moving forward, due to the circumstances and because Wisconsin school districts are not all similarly situated on these issues, WSB staff attorneys recommend that school district officials contact their district's chosen legal counsel to help them determine when and or if their local school district should adopt and implement, one, the policy and procedural requirements of the twenty-twenty-four Title Nine regulations, two, the various substantive interpretations of Title Nine and those regulations, three, uh the Title Nine employee training mandates found in the regulations, and four, their continuing obligation to prohibit sex discrimination under Title Nine. Legal counsel can also advise school district on its district's near-term approach, what we're doing now, uh to Title Nine. WSB is monitoring the situation, provide updates to become available. So Barry recommended to continue to watch for further legal updates. Um uh but I said, back to that argument, like, um and I asked, you know, again, what's law, what's what's rule? So said this, I've heard both terms thrown out there, uh law is a general term, i.e. statutes adopted by legislature, legislative bodies, whereas a rule is more administrative um by the executive branch, which this is, you know, uh this is by the federal executive branch. Um and I understand um how this has become politicized, you know, and um I don't use that term loosely, but I think that's part of it. Um you know, because it's from the executive branch, from the federal government, it it kind of raises people's dander and uh becomes politicized and, you know, I think it's our job and our to listen to our legal counsel. And and I said, well, what do you recommend? He says, well, it's the law, you know, you know, um and I said, well, what about this argument that it's a slippery slope? If you prohibit harassment, well, not prohibit harassment, I don't think that's the concern. If you prohibit discrimination based on gender identity, i.e. potentially allowing biological males to compete in girls' athletic teams. Um you know, I I understand that that is the argument that that's a slippery slope, this is opening a door, cracking the window, or a slippery slope. And I said, what do you say to that, Barry, our legal counsel? He says, that's pure speculation. Um not complying with the law based on the possibility that there may be further development of the law is purely speculative. Um so I know that that makes sense uh to that, so you know, it would be my recommendation and my ask, we've we've we can't even really, well, you won't see the new.
So we can table O for tonight.
Yeah, and that's not even tabled. Um well, I guess you would have to, because it's not the right one. So you certainly should, because it's not not even the right one. Uh number two, you know, buys another month to even talk more and learn more about it. And then um also as a reminder, in our second reading policy, it doesn't say the second reading has to be the next month. Doesn't have to be the consecutive ones, it has to be a
Or subsequent.
Subsequent meeting. So if we need more time, I, you know, I certainly recommend taking as much time as we need to get the information we need. I asked Barry, what about this August first deadline, because I knew we weren't going to make it anyway, even if this was the right policy and we went to second read next month, we wouldn't meet. And he says, I'm not aware of uh any districts anywhere ever having federal dollars withheld because they weren't in compliance. So that made me feel a lot better. And then just some, you might ask, how how many federal dollars are we talking?
Seventy percent of our budget, is that what it is?
Well, it's four point one million, so um.
Seventy percent.
I mean, it's it's a good chunk of change, but the good news is, you know, uh I think the compliance, you know, the federal government doesn't have a slew of compliance officers that are checking our website to make sure that they publish on August first.
Yeah, it sounds good, I mean, I mean, there's obviously some injunctions against it and you know, um you know, I I see every school in our district has an injunction against it. I mean, if it if it's the law, like
Say that again.
Well, there's like an injunction against Title Nine.
But I mean, he, well, yeah, the one that's being appealed in Moms for Liberty.
You're right.
Her moms, yeah, so when you say our, every school and district is in there.
Well, it just shows that there's something been filed for each school in our district with Moms.
Elementary, middle, high.
Where did you see that? Because the list I I will share.
Really?
Okay.
Yeah.
Which means what?
Which, well, just meaning that they're it it's basically on hold, like they're
Like basically, we shouldn't adopt any policy until the litigation is done.
Yeah. Well, Barry, our legal counsel asked, are you Moms for Liberty or school? I said, well, I don't know what that means, I'm probably in our school, like, did you get a membership card?
Yeah, basically, there's a uh uh you join Moms for Liberty and uh they have to have a a child in that school, and then as they do, they sign up for and sign the petition, and then those moms have your school covered under their their litigation.
So it's apparent, not as bad.
Right, right.
I think because it's in Kansas right now, it's not clear what other states are covered.
I saw a list somewhere, but I can't remember.
It was a very short list.
Yeah.
And then it sounds like it'll eventually head towards the Supreme Court, you know, so I I just I haven't, that deadline is what kind of probably raised everything with August first. Um and then just meaning the agenda, I think it it raised some questions and and you know, here we are today talking about it.
Yeah, which is perfect, it's what these meetings are meant for. So my question to you is, what, yeah, what, how do you want to proceed, what?
I don't want to do anything with it until it's done in litigation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Why have a polarizing topic for our entire community that could go to the wayside three months later? That we don't, we we might not have to deal with on either side of the spectrum.
Okay, so you're, yeah, I'm saying, let's not even put it on the agenda, let's wait.
So I understand that in your head, you're going, Rick, what's the risk? Because that's the way you think, and that makes sense to me. But we already have a policy in place for discrimination that is was fine up until two days ago, so why do we have to change it now? Right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just thinking, oh, this is opposing cons, it doesn't it doesn't discriminate or encourage harassment in any form of any of our students, our current policy. Right, and 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 by by just sitting on it, isn't um saying we don't care about
Right.
pregnancy and and sexual identity and all that, right? It just means, this is more like
Yeah.
because of the injunction, you know, and appeals.
So we we put it on hold, but how is our admin staff prepared to handle this going into the school year? I mean, are we just saying zero change, the same policy we have today?
Well, we would say what was said yesterday and last Friday.
I I'm gonna be honest with you, whatever policy we have is not going to change how we do business with the admin. Like, we're gonna treat every kid, we want to treat our own kids and and but yeah, I know people go to extremes right away, we don't want men in girls' baths, but you know, we don't have any.
I don't want that.
Right, we we
We don't have it today, but what if start of school we do?
And no policy requires that, no policy specifically prohibits that. So our policy right now allows
We provide us.
to administrate.
But we provide a different facility.
We we did cover.
We do, it was covered.
It was intentionally ambiguous.
Some of the very specific issues, I don't remember, probably nine months ago, six months ago.
Yeah.
That did, that did deal with very specific issues like that.
Okay.
I think this is probably more of an overarching, I don't want to say more meaningless, because there's a lot more like fluffy language in this than some of the policies that we did already.
There went from a forty forty-word policy to fifteen hundred pages. Who the hell's got time to digest fifteen hundred pages in twenty-four hours? Um not that smart, it could take me three months, I'm not smart enough to figure it out.
So, yeah, so, yeah.
I think we table it so it's out of litigation. I don't want to deal with it until we have to.
So what's the motion?
That's what he said.
Okay.
Table Policy One Thirteen, consideration, second, until it's on litigation.
Okay, Derek made the motion. And then Brad second. Is there any more discussion?
Nope. I guess before before it's voted on, just because it's written that way, is until it's out of litigation prevent you from ever talking about it prior.
Right, so do we just table it?
I mean, do you do you do you want to put, do you want to put, do you want to add to it?
Oh, can I see what you're saying?
Yeah.
Do you want to get ahead of it before the opportunity or before it?
What about us from, when things change?
That's that's, I mean, I mean, it it's probably if it's in litigation, it'll be likely years. And if there's certain things to discuss about it between now and then, it may, you might not want to
Have a close ended.
Have a
Yeah.
Window.
Table it and continue to monitor, watch for uh further legal to vote. Something like, you want to amend the motion?
To amend the motion?
Yeah, we have to vote that down first.
Okay.
We could amend one, since it wasn't voted on yet.
Once it was, uh
It was motion in seconds.
Yes, in seconds.
But we didn't vote on it.
Didn't vote on it.
So we're just going to go ahead and say, or we can we can vote it down. So what he said, we're going to not support because we don't like the language of it, so all in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion is not um carried, so now let's make the next motion.
Motion to table consideration of One Thirteen and monitor uh the situation through the court system and have the opportunity to uh follow up month to month.
Second. Derek made the motion, Brad second. Is there any other? Good, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, now we move to, we're just looking at the first readings for the other eight hundreds.
Yeah.
Um that that's not a motion, but we do need
CC.
motions to
Z, A, A, B, B, C, C, right?
Um for the eliminating the
No, first readings, just C, C.
Yeah. Yeah.
A move to approve core agenda item CC.
Second.
Lance made the motion, Dave second, is there any discussion?
Oh, I see.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. All right, next up, we've got Eric Vistow from Market Johnson. Thanks for coming.
Usually these are near the beginning of the agenda, he had a conflict and has to be here to be hands.
Eric two cats. Under war?
Actually, I hear um he's first placed in his golf league, let's skip golf league, be here, so appreciate that very much. Where at?
Phil Carney. Nice course.
Yeah, with a shattered ankle.
You have any early change orders?
No change orders, change orders are bad, right?
Wow. I think the last time I was here was about two months ago, so a lot progressing very well with the construction prod process, so that's why I wanted to make appearance today. Three things, I believe I have a few pictures to show, I'm sure all of you had time to stop through the the three buildings, it's turned out great, but for the community members, if we can share those, if they made the package.
They're in in your package, right?
There are, you can pull it up on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Down.
There you go. And then uh just walking through the pictures and just a quick schedule update and uh end with budget updates, which everything is looking really good at this point. Starting with the pictures, um Greg Green, uh then the nomination of the facility, what grade it meant. I thought that was a good picture to lead off with, we keep scrolling down.
So you gotta work your forty-six years, though, like Greg. Get your name on.
You know Greg's retired, but
I'm moving down again, this is the elementary school, um the furniture showed up that that really made a big impact on the space, so it it looks great in my personal opinion, old school year to to be utilized. Um haven't really had a lot of feedback with it.
Great space, I can add one in there.
Functioning awesome, if you'd like to hear. Another picture of the outside, um again, as far as just the infrastructure, the mechanical systems. Haven't had heard anything mechanically, water leaks, which is always a good sign as we continue on. Haven't had heard anything mechanically, water leaks, which is always a good sign as we can continue on. I'm moving down. I don't know if anyone has seen the new Big Panther sign that's right out, uh, in front of the new shop spaces and does its lineup, which is kind of a cool feature. So I'm driving, I haven't seen it drive by tonight. It really stands up pretty nice. Uh, next few pictures are just the inside space. So this, uh, this is from the CBT, or not CBT, yeah, advanced manufacturing space. Again, didn't have any pictures of the, uh, equipment, but the, the college has started delivering some of their very expensive molders, CNCs, it's really shaping up. Uh, this is in area J, as we call it, but that is the, the shop classes. So this is kind of a flex space. It is, uh, as you guys saw in the last tour that we did, it, it's a real big space, but you can see the finishes starting to come together with the ceiling and flooring. Um, actually, we did have some pictures. So things that you would see in a, in a true manufacturing facility. So awesome to, to give the, the students an opportunity to experience it before they get out of school. There's a picture of some of the welding booth stations and previously to this space, you had two or three. Now you got uh, twelve stations, so it opens up a lot of flexibility for the students. Uh, talk schedule here in a sec, but this is the one, uh, remodel spaces that we started right as soon as school was out. So this will be the new culinary arts lab. Uh, for teaching, uh, home act. So you can tell we're well underway, just wrapping up drywall. So over the next two weeks, the finishes will start going in, the flooring, the ceiling, then all the, uh, food service equipment. Another picture of the, uh, culinary arts space, that's where the new walk-in cooler will go, which will be a next addition for, for just the teaching staff there. Uh, right next to that culinary arts, this is the cafe space, which I will do a cool job on that. Uh, so right behind us, that's where the school store will go and then however this will function, but having a space to make coffee, donuts, things of that nature. So you can see it's, it's really come together. Uh, then, oh, there you go. So that is the, the school store. That's got some, uh, tag board, so to speak, so you can hang your apparel up. Nice, neat, orderly. Uh, that's a picture of the greenhouse, which is, I believe we're gonna do, uh, startup on that here in the next two weeks with some training sessions for the teachers, et cetera.
Technology is amazing.
Yeah, the technology.
It senses the wind direction, the temperature, sun, I mean, everything just automatically opens. Shades closes shades, opens windows. Total irrigation system.
Should've named that the Greg Greenhouse.
There's a picture of inside, but just compared to the space you had before, to this, why am I open the realm of opportunities? Uh, and then the other wing, which we call H, but the business, the business end wing, when you guys took the tour, that was well underway. So we just did the final punch list here last week. Wrapping up the, the last few fixes. Um, the theory, the goal is to get teachers in here over the next month, so they have adequate time to feel acclimated and get ready for the, uh, the first day of school. This is another room there in area H for the business lab. This is the food sciences lab. You can see all the, the different ranges and hoods. Probably butcher the, the curriculum in this space, but I believe they cook food and test different, varies what's, what's in best, things of that nature. So a lot of space, which is cool to see. Uh, next one down, this is right, right across the hallway, but this is the animal sciences lab. Um, again, similar space, but a lot of good, new, robust tables, equipment, so should be designed to, to stand up to a lot of abuse and last a long time.
Saw the dog washing slash grooming table that rises up and down and, and today, that was pretty cool.
Yeah, no, that's
It had a rubberized grippy thing that were shaped in the shape of dog bones instead of
Every detail.
Yeah. Pretty cool.
Uh, and then last space, um, the printing room, I will, I think that's the, the name of it, but
Favorite production.
Favorite production, thank you. And you can see some of the equipment that was purchased here, uh, a press. It's right there under that big hood, melts on paint. Just the, uh, the equipment even going to the spaces is very cool.
To make our own t-shirts, banners, all of that.
Finally, some more view. So this is the, uh, the green room or the, uh, video education room, we'll call it. So this is, uh, a green wall. You can see how the paint is a little different color. That was one thing we were wrapping up here last week, but uh, what they call it is an infinity wall. You can see that radius arch there. I think the thought process is when you do the green screen. Uh, videography, whatever it's called, you, it's a lot, much clearer picture. You do a lot of, of cool technology, um, with it. Then the last few pictures, um, is, is the middle school and not as aesthetically pleasing, but the infrastructure, the mechanical system is gonna be a huge upgrade. So it's on top of the middle school roof. That's a new unit that was set here a few weeks ago. Um, so a picture of how set the unit. And then a few more at the high school, just the, the facility or the thought that was put in by Wolf for, for the maintenance staff getting up and over parapets on the roof. I thought was pretty spectacular. So as far as pictures, there was, there was a few and if you guys wanna do a tour, by all means, just let us know. We're more than happy to walk you through it. Schedule wise. Uh, starting with the middle school, we are, I would say slightly ahead of, of, uh, schedule right now. Next week, we're gonna start putting ceilings, flooring back and certain sections of the, uh, of the school, we broke out into three different wings. So next week, we'll start putting, uh, call it wing A back together, following with wing B, then last wing would be wing C. So trying to give, um, Nick and Kyle, the maintenance staff, plenty of time to get their portion of the work done and get teachers in there a couple of weeks early, so they, they feel confident going into the first school year. As far as the high school, uh, feeling really good. Outside, it has improved by lately. The home bleachers are in with the new press box. Next week, the visitor side will be in and they'll set the press box over there. More or less wraps up the, uh, the stadium. Uh, August twelfth, that week, we're gonna do a whole million overlay for everything that's remaining or existing asshole in the back, but she cleaned it up nice. Pass that, we're, we're more or less wrapped up. Inside, that area H with the business wing, like I said, punch list happened last week. Other week of, uh, putting last energy touches on it, and we should be able to turn it over to teachers to, to get in there, get set up. Area J or the shop area, we did the punch list today. Um, again, two weeks to wrap up the last, uh, bits and pieces. Um, with that, the shop teachers are huge help. They're in there helping place equipment, et cetera. So we're making final connections. The goal is to give them two, three weeks in their space, get acclimated, uh, accordingly. And then last but not least, the, the culinary arts lab or the area that we started remodeling here this summer. Plan is to wrap that up here on August twenty-third. Nature of what we call summer slams, getting a lot of work done in, in a month and two and a half months. Uh, wish we could give that teacher more, more time, but, uh, August twenty-third, that space will be wrapped up. Uh, the goal is we're calling substantial completion on August twenty-third. Pass that, I'm feeling really good about this guy. We're waiting on track and I think we've overcome every hurdle that we have up to this point. Not just executing over the next month. I didn't see the finish drop. With that, jump into the budget, uh, sheet you have in front of you. Again, I was starting at the bottom. The good news, if you look at the bottom two lines, you got the total project budget with the grants from, uh, the CTE grant through the college. And then with interest earnings, the total referendum budget, or, uh, at this point, it's thirty-two million, six hundred. With some of the owner items that have been purchased through teachers or through Jen, um, through the construction costs, the professional services. We're projecting that we're right there at a, eleven thousand savings, which is a good place to be, right? Wanna allocate all this fund by the end. Um, there is that line right below it, that's in bold, forty-seven thousand. So that's construction contingency that has not yet been claimed, so to speak. So there is a good chance that that will be available here as we wrap up in September. Uh, very high level. I guess I'll open that budget sheet up for any questions, concerns that you guys have and I can speak to those.
Have you got a plan for the other one point nine million that has to be spent?
One point nine, now where are you, where are you seeing that?
That difference in, in thirty thou, thirty million, seven hundred and thirty-two, six fifty-three.
Uh, are you at the bottom?
Yeah. Grand total. Projected G M P. Right here.
Go dark blue, grand total.
Yes, I'm sorry.
What do, so we, you're coming in under budget a little bit right now, right?
So the eleventh, oh, sorry. So right now, if you look at the overall
Oh, those are in millions? That's just in
Yeah, so not just eleven, so we're more or less I wish it was eleven million, but, yeah, so at the end of the day, as, as we're projecting out into September first, I think the budget is more or less allocated to this point. There's a couple unknowns that I think are potentially conservatives, conservative, and that would be the interest that occurred at the end of the day. And then with the help of CX partners or the commissioning agent that you guys hired with, uh, some of the, the focus on energy grants. There is potential of some more money there, so not confident enough to make that allocation quite yet, but it's looking promising. Any other questions or concerns, schedule related? And then, uh, I know this is a ways out and more conversations you guys have to have, but at some point, I, I know you guys discussed in open house, whatever that could be. Or is, uh, when the project would be available, I would, I would project August twenty-third or anytime after that. Final CO is achieved, received, turned over to you guys.
Yeah, discussions have kind of tentatively, you know, been, end, end of September. Um, just to make sure teachers are comfortable in their space, they're getting their programming, kids are becoming familiar with the equipment. By that time, you know, the community, like to welcome in and see the, the staff and students, you know, using the equipment and, and using the spaces and really, really encourage our community to see these amazing spaces. I just wanna give a shout out to Eric as project manager and entire Market Johnson, Johnson organization. Uh, Erica, you're at the same weekly meetings. Um, you see every day, um, how they go in above and beyond, um, and, uh, there are no excuses. Just ask something. Yeah, you bet. And get it done.
Smile and make us feel like we're the only people on the planet. Like, and Eric's got many, you know, things going on and you don't even know it. We're always feel like a priority.
Completely trust them, never given us any reason not to, and quite the opposite. Um, they do things that I gotta find out about later that they did for us from, from Greg initially and Nick, Mac and yeah, um, so that's very much appreciated and, uh, so that trust is there and we're able to accomplish, you know, with a million dollars off our bonds and interest, just through the interest market, you know, and then we're able to add some additional things, uh, that have been wonderful. Um, like softball press box and, you know, parking, some additional parking and then, and the list goes on and on. He put together the list, it was, it was one point eight million, uh, to, to date, of additional scope, uh, because of stuff, stuff that they helped save and interest occurred. Um, so yeah, and then I continue to be surprised and amazed at the equipment that shows up. Um, you know, I haven't been involved in every detail of equipment, so it's, when I said that, it's the stuff you see at Northwood Tech or C V T C and I'm so excited for our kids to use that or staff to use it and for our community to see that and really ties into our strategic plan, which we just talked about, and, and our business partnerships, et cetera.
How much does set the star every year?
That's, we ask for three stars, cause like, we want one at every school. That gives us something they do and so can you build a couple more of those and can we keep the one you built? Yeah. So then they train our staff how to put them up and they'll go. Is the middle school gym repair finished?
Yeah, I guess, an update on that. So very unfortunate situation with the, with the water damage, so mint, mint roofing, uh, out of the Twin Cities area, they're the ones that got the work. Again, uh, their fault, but I have to give them props for, for coming through. They, they, we met with the owner of the company and he's owning up to it, so he's gonna be paying for a whole new gym. Um, the fixes, uh, I think this is happening over the next ten days, so it'll be ready for volleyball season, but the, get an order placement out of it. I thought that was echoing of that owner's.
Instead of pursuing, trying to get it completely repaired right away and there was no way that that's not gonna impact F I A and other pro- programming volleyball. So if we can get it usable, it will be aesthetically perfect, but usable and safe, we'll full replace them next year. And, and, and shout out to mint roofing. Um, they're gonna be about two hundred and twenty thousand. They're gonna have to fork out, I don't know, I think about a twenty thousand dollar project they had.
Yeah.
So, um, kudos, they were, yeah, they, they stepped up and owned it and it happens, stuff happens, but impressed with them and how they own that. And then Market Johnson, obviously, and, and as the general project managers, they just took, um, oversaw that and again, take a lot of stuff off of our plate and, and managing all the, that, uh, negotiation, so to speak. But, yeah, so we're getting another new gym floor, cause of water damage.
But apologies, I know that's a little inconvenience, so at the end of the day, a glass half-full attitude, it's, it's a good thing, but we understand the inconvenience to the players. Appreciate the patience on that.
It's a good time of year to have that, though. Right. And, and, and the water came through from nine to ten AM and people were cleaning up right away, but just water and hardwood do not mix, it's
Not very well.
Awesome. Thank you very
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for everything over tonight. All right, we can move on to, uh, possible future agenda items. Is there any? Well, just go over the important upcoming dates. July twenty-second is the school district annual meeting, budget hearing at seven PM, and the annual meeting immediately to follow at the Synchro Central Middle School Library. August eighth is our school board development meeting at five PM here at the district office. August twenty-first is our next school board meeting at seven PM here at the district office. So we will need a motion now to go into closed session with reading the statute.
Move to convening closed session for Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five one C. Considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Part one, I, superintendent's performance review.
Lance made the motion.
Well, second.
Dave second.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
So at eight thirty-two, closed session.